This conference will now be recorded.
It is now 6:00 PM and I'm gonna call the quarter. The Tilton Planning Board Public Hearing on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. All right, and I'm going to have someone read, I will go around the room and read the zoning amendments. And if there's anyone in the public either on the line, there's no one here on the line. If you have any questions after we read them, we'll have an opportunity to respond.
I don't see anybody online, so.
John, you want to read it first?
Sure. Amendment number one, prepared by the Tilton Planning Board. Are you in favor of adoption of amendment number one as proposed by the planning board for the town zoning ordinance to amend Article 2.2.1 to add 200 square feet or SF or less? 2.21 setbacks. See table of dimensional values. On any lot, an accessory building greater than 200 square feet may be erected and maintained only with building setbacks in accordance with the requirement of this item. An accessory use structure 200 square feet or less, parentheses, less than 200 square feet, close parentheses, and no higher than 17 feet, may be constructed within 10 feet of a property, of the property line, nor between a line drawn parallel to the street and passing through the closest front edge of the primary building.
Just one correction, may not be.
May not, of this one, yes.
Okay, may not be.
Yes.
So that was, that's the current.
Well, we're adding the two.
And we're adding.
And the 200 square feet or less.
So.
Is there anyone online who has any comments or questions?
I don't see anybody on the monitor.
Okay. Anyone on the planning board have any comments? We went over this last week, so.
So the idea behind it was that it didn't specify at 200 feet. So it's actually just a cleaning up of it because the 200-foot mark turned into something that was ambiguous. You couldn't tell.
And it's the common.
Yeah.
So I think 200 now square feet or less can be, is 10 feet, no closer than 10 feet. So it can't be in 10 feet.
So 201 feet.
Has been the setbacks, has to meet the setbacks.
Okay. Amendment number two, again prepared by the Tilton Planning Board. Are you in, and this is the way it's stated now. Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number two as proposed by the planning board for the town zoning ordinance to amend Article 18 dot 1.
8.
I mean 8 dot 1 manufactured homes as follows. And this is the way it reads now. 8 dot 1, all manufactured housing installed later than 1/1/2000 must meet the specifications and standards established by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, that's HUD, as of April 1st, 1995. Going to delete that and replace it with the following. 8 dot 1 will read manufactured homes. It is the intent of this ordinance to offer reasonable opportunities for the installation of manufactured housing in accordance with the provisions of RSA 674:32 and RSA 205:D. Montra Housing and other precinct-built housing as defined in this ordinance are not subject to this section. 8 dot 1 dot 1. Only manufactured homes manufactured in accordance with the National Mobile Home Construction and Safety Standards Act of 1974 is amended and manufactured 10 years of their placement in the town of Tilton are relocated within the town shall be permitted in the town of Tilton. 8 dot 1 dot 2. All manufactured homes must have a HUD certificate. 8 dot 1 dot 3. All manufactured homes installed in the town of Tilton must first receive a building permit from the building inspector prior to relocation or installation. 8 dot 1 dot 4. All permanent manufactured housing shall be placed on a permanent concrete slab or permanent foundation. The design and construction of the slab or permanent foundation shall comply with current amended building codes at the time of construction. 8 dot 1 dot 5. Normal maintenance and repairs of such a manufactured home shall be permitted provided that no structural alterations are made to the primary structure. Tom, you want to read the 8 dot 1 dot 6 through the end?
8 dot 1 dot 6, manufactured home storage. No unoccupied manufactured home shall be stored or exhibited for sale and eventual removal within a manufactured home park or subdivision or any other residential district. 8 dot 1 dot 7. A manufactured home may be occupied as a temporary residence during the construction on a lot for which a building permit has been issued. Any manufactured home may be used as a temporary office incidental to construction on or development of the premises on which the manufactured home is located for a period of 1 colon Colts, colon 1 year. For further information, the posse members contact the Ann Moynihan.
That's on the public.
Okay.
Okay. All right, are there any comments on the planning board?
So basically what the issue was that there was no floating date with the time, you know, that went along. So.
Yep.
It's, it just sat there back at 1995 and didn't float with the years to keep it up. So, and I think we discussed last time about a reasonable date. 10 years seem to be one that unless we get other comments or anything. And that was.
We had discussed initially, it was suggested five years. We discussed that, that, you know, that was a very brief time in case it didn't sell right away or different things took place, so.
The only thing that concerns me is that no unoccupied manufactured home shall be stored or exhibited for sale and eventual removal within a manufactured home park. So if somebody was moved out of their mobile home, let's say there's somebody passed away and they're trying to sell it and it's unoccupied, so that would be not permitted. So, you know, a lot of times there's elderly people or other people.
That's not how I read that. Let me see it again.
Well, it actually addresses, so no unoccupied manufactured home shall be stored. I mean, you can't bring a manufactured home to be stored for sale.
Right, that's all right.
Or exhibited for sale and eventual removal within, so it's not, if you're gonna sell a home, it exists there.
Existing.
You can't sell, they can't be selling homes there. I think it's to prevent.
So I wonder if there's a better way to word it because in the scenario that I just gave, a home, manufactured home becomes unoccupied due to, let's say that somebody passes away and sometimes it takes a little while for the family to sell it. Then that would be a violation.
You can take it right out if you want.
Yeah, see, I don't read it that way either.
Well, would that be okay to do?
If.
If somebody passed away.
If there's an existing or not passed away.
Or, well, I'm just using that one scenario, yeah, but, or not. But let's say in Shorewood Drive and it could be a mobile home that's only five years old or, and that's called a manufactured home.
Yeah, but this is under manufactured home storage. So I don't, I see that since the heading is manufactured home storage, I don't see that that says if I'm in a home and I die, my home's not being stored there. I've vacated my home and it's now, my home's now for sale. That's different from storing my, my home there.
But there's, but it says if it's unoccupied store or exhibited for sale.
Under manufactured home storage.
That's the title, but the definition is.
Do you see what I'm saying? I see it as a very different. I see because the heading is manufactured home storage, that if I'm living in a place at whatever that place is up at my house.
For example, now those two units that are sitting there, one's the RV that's illegal, that's a seasonal RV that's sitting at Gaslight because they put it there without a permit and then they didn't get approval, right? So there's that one. And then there's the other one that is older than 1995, which also can't remain there. Now, are they gonna be able to sell those from there? They can be able to put a sign and start selling those or can they?
Not, not if this goes into effect.
They shouldn't be able to, or if they want to put some on those lots and put a sign up as unoccupied, bring them in, put them there and sell them. It's to prevent them from being, they're not a dealership. And I think that's the deterrent. Now, if you want to word it some other way, we can, well, we'll do another public hearing. But we can take it out.
No, I, I think it has a good purpose. I think it's the wording that would allow somebody if, because I, I know sometimes, you know, closing on houses or mobile homes or manufactured homes, it could, you know, a lot of times they empty them and they have them.
But it's not being stored. I don't see that as being stored there.
Well, if it's exhibited for sale or exhibited for sale.
If you want to come up with a new wording, we'll have to post it and have another public hearing.
But isn't, isn't the spirit of this proposal to bring, to prevent private citizens from bringing mobile homes into a mobile home park? Putting them up for sale?
Putting them up for sale, yes, of course.
Yes.
Yeah.
Storing them there till they sell them.
Putting them up for sale, that, that in itself is a 100% behind. Because I, I just don't want somebody coming, taking a, a mobile home from everywhere and bring it down there and put one at Gaslight or wherever and put it up for sale and advertising it that they're becoming a dealer. An existing mobile home is up for sale that, that's already there.
Yeah, this wouldn't stop some of them selling their mobile homes. Obviously, they can sell it.
No, I don't see that. It's like I said, I see this as storage.
If we, I understand that you, the title, but if you look at the definition, if somebody was to sell their mobile home or their manufactured home or exhibited for sale in a manufactured home park, would they be allowed to do it under this? If, so, you know, if Tom owns.
I see them being allowed to do it.
And that, that would stand. I mean, this is official record.
Now, they couldn't pick up their mobile home, move it to the front of Gaslight Village and exhibit it for sale. And that's a little different. But, and, you know.
Right, right.
But it's an existing.
Because then they would be storing at a Gaslight Village.
Right, and put it, like if they took an old one, here's an example, maybe this is what you're getting to. So in my interpretation is, if you had a home there and you didn't want, you want a new one, you pick up your old one, you put it out front of Gaslight Village, say I'm gonna sell that or anywhere. And you buy a new one and put it on your, 2021 and on, put it on your slab. You can't put your old one out front to sell. That, that would, this would not allow that. That'd be putting it out for a sale.
So if we added that, something that qualifies.
All pre-existing homes may be sold as.
In their original place to approach position or something, you know, so, how can we?
You'd have to do the wording. If you want to send me verbiage, I can put it on or you guys can drop it right now.
See, I don't see, I'm having trouble understanding how this, that could be interpreted that way. I don't interpret it that way at all, so that's.
To just make, we don't want to do it. Or change it, then I think it has to be official record that you can go and you can sell.
This, this does not apply to existing homes sold.
Sold by original owner, resident, owner. In, kept in the same place type thing.
See, they.
Because it doesn't say anything. I, firstly, I would vote the article down on this.
See, this says that it shall be stored or exhibited for sale.
Or stored.
That's very different from listing property for sale.
Well, it's perceived, and, and then also the sentence reads for sale and eventual removal. So you're selling it to have them move out.
So if you put on, other than its original spot, placement spot.
Right, so what now, I guess I have to know is can they sell to you and you pick that up and move it out?
From their original spot, yeah, that still gets rid of, yeah. So if we put other than its original.
Move it out of the park to another park.
Not in town.
Not in town. See, I don't think you should even be doing that, but that's up to you guys. They should be, if someone has exist or they get rid of them, demo.
Well, you know, it's affordable housing and I, you know, it's 10 years, it's still a pretty nice one.
Well, then they can sell it on the foundation that it exists.
Well, they may not want to be on, in that park. There's some nicer places than others and have very strict rules and keep really nice, well-maintained things.
But then where would that, then where would they be going? Like you're telling me like Gaslight, whatever, branch doesn't have any brand new. I mean, I don't see that playing out, but, you know.
I, I have seen.
Because a nice new home isn't gonna go to Gaslight. The Gaslight units that are there, I'm gonna go to a nice park like Jensen's. Jensen's not allow an old unit.
No, well, you have the 10-year rule then and gas and the individual parks do it. But as for exhibit for sale, other than its originally placed spot.
Is that how you want to word it?
Yeah, can we work on something like that? I already got a couple. I got, yeah, I got two calls still. Stored or exhibited for sale.
This does not.
Can we say no unoccupied, can we say it this way? No unoccupied manufactured home shall be brought in to a park or exhibited for sale and eventual removal.
We already have that.
Okay.
Well, you don't want them taking their old units and moving them off to the side either and leaving them there for storage and then selling them as junk from the side.
Yeah.
Can't have these, you know, they can't.
Yeah, or just turn to storage sheds.
Yeah.
Right, 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 right. So just, I guess we can say this does not apply to existing manufactured homes sold on their.
Foundation.
On their existing.
In place on.
In their existing location.
Yeah, in place in their existing location.
Yeah. That works for me. Does that work for you?
It's gonna read, no unoccupied manufactured home shall be stored or exhibited for sale and eventual removal within a manufacturing home park or subdivision or in any residential, residential area. This does not apply to existing manufactured homes sold on their existing, in their existing location.
That's good. And that, that will solve the leaving them around. And I've, I've seen people use them for storage sheds, horse barns.
And you don't want them selling. You don't want them putting new ones in and sticking the old ones out on the street for sale like junk, you know?
Someone's in place or get rid of it, get rid of it.
That works for me. Does that work for me?
Yes, it does. Very good. So again, is that an amendment to 8.1.6 or is this a new amendment?
Well, it'll be, it's a, right, it's an amendment to that amendment.
8.1, 8.1.6.
And we'll hold one more public hearing.
Okay.
In two weeks.
Just for that?
Yeah, that's for that.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
All right.
And then it'll go on about, we have time, because I think I said the other one, I don't have a week. I think we have time, we have time for two public hearings.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Do we need to put that in the form of a motion to accept the revision?
It's an amendment.
I'll make a motion to accept the
Changes.
8 dot 1 dot 6 as amended to be presented at the next public hearing.
Yeah, that's good.
Is there a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, so be it. All right, our next is the approval in the minutes from November 29th, 2022.
Oh, I didn't print them. I had sent them to you. You didn't get them.
I, I read them and I didn't see.
Do you want me to go print them?
No, I can pull them up.
Tom, you need a copy of the minutes?
He wasn't here, so he.
He wasn't here, so I can't vote anyway.
Well, that meaning that he wasn't here, we didn't have a quorum. There was no meaning. This would be the minutes from the previous meeting. I can run upstairs. I had them. I didn't think to copy them again.
Bill to recall. Get another meeting, town meeting coming up. When is that? March?
Isn't it the first, isn't it the first Saturday in March, the second Saturday? The second Saturday. By the way, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I visited Chuck Mitchell the other day. He's hunting the hospital, recovering, and he's doing some PT at home. He's.
Let's, let's wait.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I brought over some grub for him and Kathy. There we go, good people. So. I was at Road Home up this year with the frost keys. Starting to crack along the edges, like six inches away from the edge of the roadway, starting to break down on the side. That's up at the top of the hill. And as you, as you go down, it's, you can see some stress cracks in the street.
Where did she go?
Upstairs.
For what?
She could make some copies.
Of the minutes?
Yeah.
I read them. You have, but he wasn't here.
This is the other meeting. Was that 11/29? Which minutes? Would you remember what the date is of the match we were discussing? Was it 11/29?
Wait a minute.
I think it probably was.
I think it was. 29th. 13th. Yep, that would have had to have been on the 13th. Mine went the 13th. Guess I'll have to pull them up here.
I don't know which one, was that the, Lee, was that the November meeting?
November 29th.
The 29th, because December, we just did a little discussion.
December, we didn't. Don't say we did a discussion because it would have been illegal. We didn't have.
We didn't have.
It was just the two of you, remember?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's just the, the one we called.
Thank you.
And it was a short meeting too because it's on the.
I just got a message from Christine. She just got home. Do we need her? And I told her no. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. So, so be it. All right, then I guess our next meeting.
I just have two quick things if I can just mention at the next meeting if you want me to bring it forward. So one is your rules. The site plan regs call out your fee for butter notices at $10. And we are now up to over $8 to mail, certified mail. So we should be considering increasing that because it's gonna stop. Do that, because that is supposed to cover the cost of us doing it as well, the labor. So if I will, if you want to think about it for the next meeting and I can put on the agenda for discussion and then we can talk about making amendment for that on the regs. You do have the authority to do it because it's in your regs, change the fees. I did note it on my report to the selectmen, just saying we're gonna be looking at that, but it's not. At first I thought it was under the selectmen's purview, but it is after the planning since it's in the regs. I had suggested $15. I mean, certified mail used to be $3, $4, $5 back this while ago when I was doing it. You know, it's up to eight now. So 15, hell, I looked at a couple of other towns that have amended it to 12. So if you want to think about where you want to put it, but I mean, the cost of postage is going up every year.
I was gonna say there's increases.
You know, and there's a lot of work to it involved. It doesn't mean just going and sticking mailbox. You gotta make sure everyone is received and if they don't go back.
Turn and see it and then we do the labels. So anyway. So think about it and we'll put that on the next, I'll have that on the next agenda. And the other thing we gotta remember, and I know you had mentioned, I assume you still want it on the agenda. We just haven't really had a full board to take any action on things, is you had discussed authorizing Kevin Duval to do driveways. Didn't really have me lately, but come the spring, we'll probably start to see some. And if you still want to do that, that's something we should put, so I can put that on the agenda if you still want to discuss that. So those are two things I have, the regs and, and the driveways.
I had. And I had, oh, no, I just wanted to follow up, did you check on the sign at Roma Jones?
I didn't.
What did they do?
Whatever, cause it's blinking, cause it's blinking, you see.
It's a sign that's.
I will, I'll put it around my.
It's a screaming song.
The Roma Jones, it was, I think, for the holiday, Roma Jones.
No, this is for Kevin to inspect them, to get, okay, the permits.
To, to approve.
Prove the permit, okay.
That's the way we used to do it.
Okay.
We had someone on the board who did not like that.
But he does it now, I, and you see, it's up, yeah, that's really a few guys.
I, I mean, it's.
I think you suggested it, John.
I think I suggested it, cause that's what, and that's been, that's been a big.
Well, we had a couple that were approved, that were against zoning violations, that was, oh, that were approved because of lanes from corners and bends and.
That's not.
And also setbacks from the.
He says he checks the.
Town lines.
But anyway, yeah.
Well, I've been out with him, and he does check it.
And if you want, if you want, we can have him come and talk about it too, if you, I mean, I don't think he cares if he has to do it or not, but he does it anyway, cause you make him, that you make him, but we ask him to review it anyway, so I guess, again, it's up to you guys, who put it off the discussion. And I guess the last thing is, we need board members, so, you know, fortunately, we have not had to delay applicants because of quorum, and we missed quorum last time, but we do have some projects, I'm anticipating a busy year, so I do have one application, which is fine, but he isn't a resident yet, so. So I'm not gonna bring it forward to you until he is a resident, bought property here, but he's not living here yet, so, yeah.
And I'm not sure he will. So, cause I know you'd tell.
Yeah. But, yeah, we need to get some, maybe, maybe the election again, we'll try, Janice and I might try and go, we did get a little bit of interest there, I don't know if we have any other way we can get people, some different, you know, people that, and, you know, to get the same people, the problem with getting the same people on multiple boards is that they don't come, because they're too busy too, you know, like like Christine, and, you know, she's not budgeting, you know, everyone has a lot, too much on their plate, and so then they don't come.
Unless they're like me, and I'm retired, so I don't have anything else, you know?
But it was the same problem I run with Eric, and I shouldn't, but, you know, he, he had multiple boards, and I know it's hard, he was on fire, and this one, so when you have somebody who's on too many boards, sometimes that's hard too, so maybe we can find someone.
Do you, does anybody have any?
We can put something in the paper, if you wanna authorize.
We've done that, but we could do that again.
I can put, try and put on the homepage of the website. And I could use some people on zoning as well, I want a board.
The other, when Jeanie puts out, she puts on newsletter with the the tax bill that goes out, I wonder if we could write something.
Why don't they put a newsletter out this time, I think the tax collector, she put a newsletter out? I thought she, that'll be too much, but, I don't know, yeah, newsletter with the tax bill is a good way of getting, cause it gets to every single house.
And there's, I know they have a webpage too. You know, put that out.
We need some people to start, you know.
Some younger blood too.
Right, exactly, I'm not, right, and I'm including that, it's all, right, these people are moving on, and.
That's exactly right.
They gotta learn, they have to learn, you know what, the zoning board is, is not, is a fairly, you know, you've got Matt Gilman, who's young, he's, he's, you know, very involved, and, and, you know, we have some, you know, Brian isn't, it's a younger group, Eric New Singer, his, you know, his teacher, he's, so we have kind of a younger group on that side, so maybe, you know, and they're, and that's all they do with zoning, you know, all four of them, that's all they do, so it's not.
It's hard for Matt, cause he's a fireman.
Right, but they're not burnt out either, which is another thing, right, people say, I can't go another means, right, you know, so, if we can maybe find, maybe if the election is replaced to in March to talk it up, but, anyway, we we've gotta do something, cause we can't continue with.
And it's.
Well, a lot of times, you know, people don't realize that they have what it takes to do it, you know?
They think I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, and it's, you know, reading things, common sense read. What they, you know, it's, yeah, it's pretty straightforward, and this is how you learn these things, you know, and, you know, being on a board, you don't have to.
If you're an engineer, you don't have to, right?
It's nice to have some background, but, you know, if you've got some good common sense, and.
And maybe COVID was made it harder, people didn't wanna come out, and we weren't, you know, we, we was kinda home, so now that that's breaking, maybe we'll get some people, I don't know, we do need to talk it up, and, and, so I think.
It's always been an issue, it's, it was like, it was a couple that they were, when I first got on planning board, they were both on it, husband and wife, and they were like on five boards, and they moved out of town, and it left everything.
That's the other thing, right, you have one person doing all the boards, it's not good anyway, you gotta get other, you know, people involved, cause like I said, something happens to one, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's see what we can we can get some new people to come on board, get some, boy, nice to have some alternates, wouldn't it? We don't even have a, we don't have a full board, I have my alternates, so. Yeah, okay.
All right, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good.
Is it, Mia, is it shut off yet?
Okay.